So I'll take our seats, please. Joan, can you do the roll call, please? Call the meeting to order at six de quila? Six o'clock. Let's do the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Roll call, Joan.
Charles Long?
Here.
Kevin Mitchell?
Here.
Priscilla Maniulito? Chris Mortensen?
Here.
Michael Schaaf?
Here.
Thank you, Joan. We do have a quorum, so let's get our business underway. Members of the board, you have the agenda for tonight's meeting. It is the pleasure of the board.
Move to accept the agenda and move forward with the meeting, please.
Thank you, Chris. Joan?
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Ms. Maniulito, that's obvious on here. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Gosh, shame. Let's...
Recognition.
Recognition. We have... Yes.
No.
Now.
There we are. President Long, Javana Hanks here. She is Assistant Superintendent over our Public Relations, and she'll be in charge of the recognition this evening.
Okay.
President Long, I do apologize. Representative Garcia is here, but he is on a phone call, I believe, related to the special session, and they are discussing those items. He should be released around 6:30, and I'm not sure if Senator Pinto is going to be able to make it this evening. I was wondering if the board might be amenable to maybe moving the recognition down a little bit until at least after 6:30.
Okay. That'd be fine. Let's go to public comment. We have one here. Okay, Andrea Thomas?
Good evening, Superintendent, school board members and audience. This evening, I would like to talk about one of the concerns that I see on the agenda of approval, revised public comment, the policy. I'm not sure what is being brought up, but as parents and as students who speak up here, who take this time to speak, I would like to know why. I know you can't answer, but I think we have the right to know as far as why the changes, and also other changes that are coming up all of a sudden, you know? We, me as a mother, me as a parent, as a community member, as a chapter, I'd like to know. I don't understand how the school board members, the new school board members come into play and all of a sudden, all these changes, you know? We're just like, mentioned the last two meetings, we're just going back three steps. We're gonna be, we're gonna be building a wall again, divisions. For the past two months, parents were up here, students were up here, speaking about school, about the good things, about the positive things, and now we're coming back and we're coming here frustrated because of all these changes. Last meeting, it was said positively as far as bringing up our children, our children's gonna be a concern, the young people, getting them educated so they can take our place in being leaders. That was said by you, Mr. Long, but yet you went and removed a great leader on our school board. And then, as far as... I'm pretty upset right now about all these changes and stuff because you, you school board members are supposed to be there for our kids, for our students, not for yourselves, not to make something of yourself. It's supposed to be for our kids. And if time is gonna be taken away, that's very unfair. You have us parents working. We can't, our priority, just like anything else, is our kids, to make sure they're fed, taken care of first before we come over here and take, and take care of something else for them. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Lynn?
Thank you. Good evening, President Long and members of the board, Mr. Hyatt, ladies and gentlemen. I want to tell you I have a statement tonight that's gonna be fairly critical. It's gonna be quite critical, okay? Just say that upfront. I want to address two items. One is an official agenda item. They're two things, but they're related, I believe. On April 17th, the board approved funds or approval in some fashion for the board members to be able to have the technology that some of you thought you lacked for communication, internet, computer use, cell phones, just what that'll consist of, I don't know. But the signal seemed to be that you want to communicate, and there are people you need to communicate with, the administration, but also your constituents, meaning the public. And it seems now we're sending another signal in a couple of ways. I sent each of the board members and the top administrators an email about the upcoming Navajo Language and Culture Revitalization Summit, coming up at Sayli in a week and a half, or two weeks. It's gonna be one of the most significant major meetings in education and Navajo education in our territory. Forty-two breakout sessions already scheduled. Keynote speakers who are prominent in the field of Navajo Indian education, bilingual education, language revitalization. It's gonna be a super conference. It hasn't been publicized as well as it should be in terms of the content, but I did not get a response from any of the board members, not even just acknowledging my email. Now, I was not a super board member, but I did try to acknowledge communications that I got from people. And the... The point I made in the email was, and I don't know if you got it because I didn't get a response, so I'm gonna repeat it. I was hoping that there could be representatives from the district attend that conference, representatives of the board, but I know there's a board conference thing going on too, state one, and administration, and administration's got things going on, but also staff, teachers. On the agenda tonight, there's approval for one Navajo language culture person to go for one day. It's a three-day conference. It's 25 bucks for three days. We spend $400, up to $1,000 sometimes for a registration fee for professional conference at $25. Man, we should be sending all of the Navajo language teachers and all of the principals and a bunch of people. This is, this is a great opportunity, especially for the cost, okay? So that's, that's my one point. And then, related to that, in terms of communication, is the public comment item on the agenda? I think we made some progress in the past few years in terms of trying to say as a board, we had goals including increasing parent involvement. That's an old historic issue in Navajo and Indian country because obviously kids were taken away from parents. Parents were blocked from having say-so with their kids' education historically, for a hundred years. Now, we work hard to get parents involved, but meanwhile, we're sending another signal and saying, "We don't want to hear from the public." We had a proposal, there was a proposal to limit public comment to one minute. It takes about a minute to introduce yourself properly in Navajo if you're gonna say your clans and then also say it in English. You can't even get to your business in a minute. And, and so I think you need to please consider not only your time, yeah, we had long meetings, and you'll have some long meetings. That's okay. That's what you're here for. But the signal you're sending to the people is, "Do you want to hear from them or not?" And a lot of the comments, like mine, sort of negative tonight, people, when everything's hunky-dory, they keep quiet, right? And they have something they're concerned about, complain. That's when you hear from them, but that's the nature of things. So I want to just point out, Navajo Hope Observer, don't know if you ever see it, it's mainly more to the west where it gets distributed, article on protecting native languages important for cultural preservation. President Begay was the keynote speaker at the National Annual National JOM Conference, and his whole major point was the need to support through the schools the revitalization of Navajo language. Sometimes people, you know, not all Navajo people, when you've got 200,000 people, is everybody gonna agree? No. People 20,000 in Gallup, we don't all agree. But the point is, the official position of the Navajo Nation is to support the native language and to try to re-strengthen it, and that was keynoted by Russell Begay, and it's around us. Independent article about, on the verge of extinction, the Keres language, Akama and Laguna, and what they're trying to do with that. Well, my time is, I'm sure my five minutes is about up, but I want to say that that communication is part of the board's responsibility, even when it's a burden, even when it's not always positive comments, and the people need the message that you want to hear from them, and when you cut the time back for public comment, that's sending the message you really don't want to hear that much. And it's difficult to keep the five-minute limit. I know that. We never had the nerve or the will to have a timer because sometimes it feels, especially if you get an older traditional person, it doesn't feel polite to cut them off, but that, that's a struggle in terms of the time. I know that. But I do believe you need to keep, five minutes isn't that long if somebody really has something to say, and I think it's the message you're sending with that time limit that's important. So, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lynn. Pamela Smiley?
Good evening, school board superintendent. My name is Pamela Smiley, and I'd just like to acknowledge the agenda item, the public comment section. As a community member and as a parent of a student that goes, that's in our district, we have, as parents, every right to voice our concerns. We, meaning the constituents, we voted you school board members to be our voice, to be our students' voice. So five minutes isn't a lot of time, and if we're gonna be bringing information or concerns to you as school board members, are you gonna be able to answer us individually? Just like this gentleman said, he's been emailing you and there's no response. So where is it, how are you gonna address our concerns, our students' concerns? And just reading through the paper with the new school board members, I'm disappointed that you guys as a team can't come together and communicate. I know there's a new president, Mr. Long, but I'd like to commend Priscilla Martin. She did an excellent job. And I think you guys have to consider communication. It's a vital part of working as a team member. And if you're not gonna listen, who's gonna, who's gonna listen to our, our students? We're our voice as parents. We're the voice of our students. So I'd like you to consider really how you guys got into office and where we're looking at with our operational budget with the Governor Martinez, the, the things that are happening in Albuquerque with APS, what's happening here? I'd like to know what you guys are doing to focus on that, not public comments. We have every right to speak, and as, and as constituents, we are gonna be heard. With the Navajo culture as well, the majority of ours, of our district is made up of the Navajo population. So where are you guys gonna go if you have no students? So all in all, you guys have to consider it, communicate, and let's move on, let's, let's move forward. Enough of this non-communication. It starts with you guys, and in return, you guys don't want to hear, you don't want to hear from us. So I'd like to hear from you guys, what's happening, our budget, our education, because without our Navajo students, we don't have a district. Thank you.
Thank you, too. Thank you for all your comments. Your comments is well taken. Let's go down to approval of meeting minutes. The May 1st Board of Education meeting minutes, board members?
I move that they be accepted.
Okay. Motion by Michael. Roll call, Joan.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen? Mr. Mortensen?
Did the, I, I, I may not have seen it, but I, I don't know if that correction was added in there?
It is in there.
Uh, yes, then I approve.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Okay, we approve our meeting minutes of May 1st. Let's go down to number four, approval of consent agenda items, board members. Consent agenda items 6A, 6B, 6C, 6D, 6E, 6F, 8B, 8C, 8D, 8E, 8F, 8G, 8H, 8N.
I have one question for 8H on the, how were the schools picked for the, having the onsite scheduled meetings? Because we had no, no input on, on the school board members, so I just wondered how they were picked.
President Long, Mr. Schaaf, we have tried to rotate through all the schools in the entire area, and so this has been going on for many years where we try to hit every school. So obviously, we can't hit all the rural schools in one year, and so this is just a continuing schedule of schools that we're going through. But if, it's, it is always up to the board if you want to make a change, and sometimes that does happen, if there's a change, wanted or needed.
So what is the pleasure of the board under consent agenda items?
I move to approve.
Okay. Motion by Chris to approve. Roll call.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Okay, let's go down to study circle.
Mr. Long, if we might, Representative Garcia's here to receive his recognition, and so we'd like to turn the time back over to Javana, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, that's fine.
President Long, members of the board, Superintendent Hyatt, members of the audience, it is my absolute pleasure to give recognition, recognition to Representative Harry Garcia and appreciation of all of his efforts in working in support of the Gallup McKinley County Schools in this past legislative session. Mr. Garcia is definitely a proponent of the district, and we appreciate his support at the legislative level. I'd like to recognize Representative Harry Garcia.
Members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, it's an honor being here. Thanks for inviting me here. It's a real pleasure. As you all know, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, that the state is having a real hard time with financing. You know, the governor's not communicating with the Democrats whatsoever, and I'm not here criticizing the governor by no means, but we're gonna go into a special session on Thursday, or Wednesday of this week, next coming week, and hopefully there will be no more school cuts because I will not support that whatsoever. But we're at a shortfall of about $170 million, I think, right now is that we stand today, and it'll, it might change because they say that the GRTs are coming in stronger than what we expected, so that's gonna deviate some of our problems. But don't get your hopes up too high on, on school cuts because, you know, I'm not gonna support them. I didn't support them the first time around because, you know, all our public schools got whacked pretty good, and we don't want that to happen again. So we're gonna fight as much as we can to keep from that from happening, okay? But it, it's a possibility, they're there, and we do not need that for our kids, you know, because you cut more school funding, what are we gonna do with our kids? We need to educate and not put them out of school. You know, and this is my first term as a representative, you know, and I support all schools. My district is part of McKinley, Cibola, San Juan, Socorro, Valencia, and Bernalillo Counties, but you know, we're gonna support everybody if we can. Like Gallup means a lot to me. I live in Grants, but this means a lot to me to be here and to support you people, and we will keep on doing what we're doing. And mark my words, when it comes up to whack the schools again, I'm not gonna support this, and most of our Democratic, my colleagues don't support it either. We're not, you know, we'll do our best to keep that from happening, okay? You can take, you know, my word for that, that we really will try to support all you people. Once again, board, thank you for having me here. I really appreciate it, and if I can help you guys with anything to do with your schools, because you know, our kids should come first in our state. We need to keep that up in mind, that, you know, that's number one thing, education, our kids. Because what happens to your younger kids, you know, if they don't have something to do, or they drop out of school because there's not enough funding for it, the next thing that's gonna happen, we're gonna get in trouble with them. You know, idle hands make for bad timing, and they start doing stealing drugs and whatever. So we do need to educate our kids, so with that being said, again, thanks for having me here. I appreciate it, and like I said, if I can help you guys with anything, I'll be more than that, too, okay? Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Representative Garcia. Yeah. Let's go down to study circle. Reports, superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Long, members of the board. We have several items, and we have timed these so that we can be efficient with people's time this evening so we can get to other matters. I want to mention a few things before I turn the time over to a couple of the assistant superintendents to do some reports. The first thing I want to announce, and I could go into more detail later on or answer questions, and more documentation will come out in the near future, but today as administrative staff, we made a couple of decisions that will impact our schools and our students and might help with board members and other things with respect to complaints and concerns. One of them is, we've had several concerns, and there were some reasons for these changes in the past, but at this time, we're making a change to now change back from SAC lunches for athletes and activities so that students are able to receive a meal, and we have upped the amount of that meal up to $8. Now, that's not a huge jump, but we feel that an $8 limit will suffice when students need to receive a meal from a restaurant or a local place to eat, or even those places further out. So that's a positive change for our students. We actually found that there is a cost savings or a cost, a lack of savings with respect to SAC lunches. It's kind of an interesting piece of information that we gathered over this last month. Another item we changed also was, we currently allow $17.50 per student for a hotel room. Usually, there's four students to a room. We have upped that to $25 per student so that the total amount for a hotel room for these activities, athletic activities, is now $100 per room. We felt that was a necessary change that we can have our students stay in a better hotel. We've had some experiences out of late where we've had some hotel rooms that were not up to par and had some, some serious health conditions and concerns with respect to some of the students staying in those hotels. And the last thing, and this will go, we've discussed this as a board, we have not released it to the community yet, and so I hope that the newspapers latch on to this one so that they can do an article on it. And that is, as a, as a school district, we have had a poor practice in the school district for many years, and part of it has to do with budget and other things, but we've developed this tradition of requiring our parents and guardians to purchase general supplies for our students' access to the general curriculum, and usually that comes in the form of a list, class list or teacher list for students. It also comes in the form of fees for certain courses. As we have studied this, we have found that in some cases, some of our parents and guardians are racking up costs in, in excess of hundreds of dollars to take, to send their students to school, or usually that's from a multiple student family. And so we are enacting a, a process so that no longer will class lists be able to be sent out by schools, and that the Gallup McKinley County School District will cover all of the general supply needs of our students. It has been too long that the needs of our students have been put on the backs of parents, and so this is a big change for our district, and it's, I'm sure it's welcomed by our community. It may not be welcomed by whoever's making all the money off of those class lists, but as a district, we can actually cut the costs of those, those supplies significantly because of our purchasing power, and so we are going to use our operational funds to take care of that need. So we are excited for, for that change. Before I turn the time over to the assistant superintendents for a few other reports, is there any questions regarding those three items?
Questions?
How do some of these changes, you know, and I applaud you, I think these are good changes, but I want to make sure that they don't get us in a bind, you know, maybe down the road somewhere if there's budget shortfalls or something like that. I mean, what, what, what kind of an effect do they have, or, and is there an ability to, you know, any of this stuff pull them back if we have to, if we're, if we're in a budget bind or something like that?
That's always a possibility. I'm not stating that this is for sure, that it'll always go up, but currently, like I mentioned when I talked about the cost for these lunches and dinners, $8, that's actually, we still think that we're gonna save money by raising the amount and not having SAC lunches, and that is due to, currently, we buy or purchase a lunch, SAC lunch for all students that go on a trip, and we know from, from experience that there are a large chunk of students that go home with parents at night after an athletic event who don't eat that meal. And so every time we have that student go home, there's a wasted meal, a wasted cost of $5 per student. By raising that to $8 and reducing that, or assuming the number of students that are coming back home and will eat that meal, it's still a cost savings, or at least break even. We found that our costs two years ago were $60,000, $70,000 for the meals. This last year is about $110,000, so we did not have a cost savings. And so we feel comfortable with this change. In our, in our session that we had a few weeks ago, we talked about our budget. We feel very comfortable currently. That doesn't mean that something could happen in the future when we have to make some cuts or adjustments, but also the hotel, it's a safety concern, and class supplies, it's, it's an initiative of the district board, and so we push forward. We, we wouldn't do something if we didn't feel comfortable.
The, the meal thing, I mean, I think makes a ton of sense. The SAC lunches for athletes is just, I, I, I mean, you want to be fair, but it just, I mean, I remember playing on the basketball team and the football team, and, and we would put the hurt on buffets, and it, there's just this tremendous, you know, calorie need, and anyways. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. President. I'd just like to say that, you know, I really... I'd just like to say that, you know, I really appreciate these changes that administration is making with the food, room, and supplies as well. You know, these, these changes will help our students and help our parents as well. So I'm very glad you guys are, have decided to do this. And, you know, I see good change, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd like to next ask Assistant Superintendent Javon Hanks to come up. She's gonna give a, there was a request for a update on the budget process for our district. So I'll turn the time over to her.
President Long, members of the board, Superintendent Hyatt, members of the audience. Where we are right now in the budget process is, we've identified through our budget committee our targeted goals that we're working under. And those, of course, are focused on academic achievement of our students, ensuring and increasing parental involvement in the school sites, making sure that we are looking at our cultural components within the district, looking at increasing vocational capacity in the district for students. And then, as was mentioned by Mr. Hyatt, the elimination of fees and the purchase of supplies. So as each one of our budgets come in, we're looking at how those budgets can fit into the pieces. The New Mexico Public Education Department on their part, and actually releasing items, actually releasing budgets. Just in the past week or so, we've actually received our major funding allocations from the Public Education Department. And so what we're working on right now is putting all of those budgets into appropriate formats. What I was going to ask during my time today is if the board would consider having a special meeting, maybe around May the 30th, so that I could present in detail the various allocations that we've received, and how they're going to be presented to you on the first board meeting in June. I just wanted the board to have an opportunity to kinda see in depth how the budgets were gonna come across, ask any questions, and then also give me an opportunity, if you had concerns, for me to answer those concerns before the June board meeting. Additionally, we've been scheduled right now for an official technical review at the Public Education Department, June 27. We are requesting the possibility of having a telephone review, which the district has had in the past. And Mr. Hyatt has been supporting me with the Public Education Department on potentially looking at that. The technical review is typically a very short period of time, and as it is a three-hour drive, one way forward and one way back, we're just asking for some, you know, financial consideration on the time constraints of staff in doing that. I'm definitely open to any questions or concerns or consideration possibly of us being able to meet May 30th, to go in depth on some of these budget issues.
Ms. Hanks, how long would that take for that session? Just so they're aware of the time constraints of the meeting.
Sure. So it, it probably wouldn't take more than an hour to actually go over the various components of the budgets. And again, there will be lots of resource material that you can take and absorb on your own time. And then that way, when we come back for that first board meeting in June, I would definitely be open to any questions or concerns that you had also on that day. I'd be open to any questions, concerns, comments.
Okay.
Mr. President? Yeah. I don't know how June 1st would, would do. I don't know if you're going to Albuquerque as well, but I know sometimes in the past, we've had our special meetings, like at 5:00, 5:30, say, in Albuquerque, when, when we're already gonna be there anyway for the conference. I don't know, that's just an idea I'm kinda throwing out there. I mean, I've known, I've known, I know that we've done that before, to where we meet like at 5:30 when everyone has checked in for our conference.
I'm fine with either of those, you know, either of the dates, whether we're at the conference or, or here, makes sense to me.
I'm actually not traveling to that conference, so that might be an added expense on the district for me.
So I guess we can keep it on May the 30th.
And I'm open to any time that you're available on that date. And, and kinda the reason why I'm pushing it out just a little bit further is, again, I'm still waiting on some final budget allocations to come through. With all the financial issues that you guys have heard over the past few weeks, several awarding agencies have had issues in getting award letters out. Now, the award letters that we've received have not been significantly lower in any way than we've received in previous years.
What time works for you?
Day, whatever time you guys want, I will be there.
I would like to suggest 2:00, 2:30.
It's fine with me, that's fine with me. And this is, of course, a meeting that's open to the public.
Absolutely, yes. It'll be open to the public. You will have a comprehensive notebook given to you. And again, that's, I won't go over all of it in detail, but it's all resource material that you guys can take in your own time and ask me any questions you like about the information provided.
Super, because I know we've had, you know, some of those in the public comments, and we invite anybody that wants to come and, and check it out. Those budget meetings are exciting. And so anybody that wants to come and, and see that, that would be great.
Yes. I'm, I'm like, I'll tell you, it's a wonderful time.
Yeah. Thank you, Javon. Any other comments or questions?
So May 30th, at what time?
2:00.
May 30th, 2:00. 2:00 P.M.
Thank you so much, board.
Thank you. Javon.
President Long, the next person we'd like to invite, I'd like to invite up is our Assistant Superintendent Dr. White. Shall we talk about dual-language education report?
President Long, members of the board, and Mr. Hyatt. I'd like to give my time to the language, dual-language education of New Mexico. Mr. Patrick Morito, who will give you the details of what this press release is about.
Just a reminder of a five-minute limit in the report. Thank you. Sorry.
Well, I guess that rules out talking in Navajo, right?
You can do that. I'll just talk to the report part, please introduce yourself.
Again, my name is Patrick Morito, and for those of you who are Navajo. [Navy accent] [Navy accent] So with dual-language education in New Mexico, it's a nonprofit educational organization based in Albuquerque, New Mexico. Been there for about 15 years now. And what dual-language education does is provide support to schools that are thinking about dual-language education, and not only in New Mexico, but also in other places in other states. And so within the, last year or a couple of years, dual-language education received a grant from Kellogg Foundation. And through that grant, one of the things that we were asked to do was to select some schools that were thinking about putting in place a dual-language education, mainly indigenous language. So in prior years to that, dual-language only was focusing on like Spanish or non-indigenous language. So this part, this grant, sort of provided an opportunity to look at schools that have indigenous language programs, and really look, begin to have the conversation about what would dual-language look like in an indigenous language school. So this hasn't really been done before in terms of, in the state of New Mexico. So, so it's kinda like a three-year grant on our part. So in, in that process, we went and communicated with some schools that had dual-language program. One of those was Navajo Elementary. And so we had this conversation, and we picked them to be one of our partner schools. So what that means is, from here until June 2019, we're gonna, they're gonna be a partner with us in moving forward and really working with them and supporting them, and really defining what dual-language education is gonna look like from, from, with indigenous language, which hasn't been done before. So the idea is that, as we move forward with this, that this will provide some type of a framework for other schools that are thinking about dual-language and Navajo language or other indigenous languages. So this is kinda like a, a new, a new initiative, so to speak. So what that support will include is working with schools, doing a program retreat, looking at what dual-language is, the research behind it, the theory behind it, and looking at curriculum, and moving forward and planning with them. And also includes a, what we believe is, is a partnership with the community, because with indigenous language, you have to have the partnership with the community. So these include chapter houses. Also, we extended our hand out to Navajo Nation, the Department of Indian Education. So they're also a part of this conversation as we move forward, because we know that Navajo Elementary can't do it by themselves. The more we have in terms of partnership and resources, I think it's gonna be a good initiative. So with that, I think I've covered most of the main points. So with that, I don't know if you have any questions?
Any questions?
I got a question, Mr. President.
Yes.
Logistically, how does this look, you know, on a day-to-day basis for this dual-language thing at a, you know, at the elementary school level? How, how does it work?
Well, like I said, it's, it hasn't been done before with an indigenous language. So it's something that we're gonna, you know, basically from scratch, so to speak. So a lot of that conversation is gonna be like, if you look at your curriculum, you might say, well, are you looking at a 90-10 model? Are you looking at a 50-50 model? So those are where we share that conversation with staff. And the staff's gonna be, based on their resources, based on where they're at, where the students are, you build that model with it. So there's different ways, it's gonna look differently for each school. But I think with, it's, with the resource that they have out there, a good, I guess, way to put it is like, we're gonna help schools define what content's gonna be taught in what language and how much time. So there goes, it could be like 50-50, but we don't know. But that's the, the good thing about it, is it's very interesting. It's innovative, it's a new initiative.
It sounds like you've got some, you know, some challenges, but it sounds neat. I mean, I think it's a great, a great idea. It's exciting to see, I'm excited to hear how it, how it goes and what you come up with.
And it's gonna be good for other schools in your district and other states to look at, so.
Members of the board, we wanna use this as an opportunity to springboard. It is, to try to roll this out to the whole district or to certain parts of the district is difficult until we get our feet underneath us and start building a foundation and a springboard to jump off of. And so statistics, through statistics and also through research, we know that a dual-language program, second language learners, is, is, is the best way to revitalize language and to teach students. Actually, students progress faster when they're learning in dual-language than they do in a single language. And so we're excited with the opportunity to work with Kellogg on this particular grant. And so we're, we're excited for the possibilities.
Appreciate you.
Mr. President, I just had, I just want to know, have you, of course, you're introducing this to the board tonight. What, what is your outreach with the communities and the chapters at this point?
We did meet with the principal and the staff, so that we, we did lay out some next steps. So the, the next step would first would be here, making it formal. Then we start attending the chapter meetings and sharing that information with them. And then during the summer, we move forward with the staff. You know, we have some next steps that are in place, so. But the key point is that we, we have to have those conversations with the parents, with the community, the chapter officials. And we look forward to being out to those chapter meetings as well, so.
Okay, thank you. Because I would like to be informed when you're hitting the chapters, and therefore, maybe us board members can attend the chapter meeting at the same, at the times that you will be at the chapters doing presentation as well. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
President Long, members of the board, the last presentation is by Assistant Superintendent Gerald Horasik, who is over curriculum instruction. He's gonna give a surface-level review of what curriculum instruction is and what's happening in the district.
President Long, members of the board, Superintendent Hyatt, surface level, okay? That's what I'm gonna try to do. And I have my timer, so we'll see if I can stick to it.
A big hook will come out of the ceiling.
We need to borrow your timer.
That's right. So what I really wanna do is, I wanna talk about the curriculum piece first, and kind of explain what that is. So teachers have documents that we've created as a district, and it's called the curriculum. And they're done by standards. And so the standards are typically paced in a certain sequence. And I'm just gonna give you an example of one standard and what has to be taught in that standard. How to determine two or more main ideas of a text, explain how they are supported by key details, and summarize the text. So there's three things in that standard, it's called the LA standard, that have to be taught from just one standard. So what they do from that, having the standard, is they go and they create a lesson plan. You know, so they have the what to teach, then the lesson plan helps them with the how they're gonna go about doing that. And so when they teach that lesson to the class, they'll teach multiple standards, not just that one standard that I talked about. So there might be three or four, five or six in a nine weeks or in a three-week period. Then after they've taught that, they give the students an assessment. And back when we all went to school, we didn't call them assessments, we called them tests. So they give them a test on what they were taught, and it's usually over several standards over several weeks. And once that's done, the kids take the test, the teachers look at that data. And they might look at the data individually or as a group sometime after they've given that, as a group of teachers. Because they might have given the same test to all third graders. So they analyze that data, and then they go back and they look at where students did well and where they struggled. And if you look at our proficiency scores, it's usually where they struggle, because we still have relatively low proficiency scores, but we've made some gains. And then so what they do is, they take time out of their schedule to go back and reteach those areas where students struggled. So I just wanna connect that together. They have the curriculum, which is really the standards of what's supposed to be taught. They teach that for a set period of time, and then they test the kids, we call them assessments. They look at the data, and then they go back and they really help kids where they're struggling to get them ready for the next piece, or the year-end summative test, which we call the PAR, to get them ready for that. So the last part I wanna talk about is, we realized last year that our, our current assessment platform wasn't really aligned to what we were teaching. So we got feedback from principals and from teachers that, in some cases, we would have an assessment, but it wasn't tied to what was taught during that nine weeks. So for my department, and, and so the reason why we created a curriculum instruction assessment department is, we're pretty excited, because we're gonna go to a new platform. We don't know what the platform is yet, it's gonna go out to RFP. But we do know the platform that's chosen, whatever that is, is my department. There's about, I think, six of us in there. We will be in control of making sure that assessment matches what was taught during that time period. And we call them nine-week time periods. But we will, we, we will be directly responsible for, if it's in that nine weeks and being taught, we better make sure the assessment question matches what should have been taught. Because what was happening in some cases is, what was being assessed was something that wasn't taught till later on during the year. That doesn't give you real accurate data. So we feel like we can clean that piece up. So that kinda ties the curriculum instruction assessment piece in a brief way together. So any questions around that?
Questions?
I got a lot of questions, Mr. President.
Sure.
Always do. So you've got this standardized curriculum, which makes a ton of sense. What mechanism that you, what mechanism in there do you have to say that, you know, if, if the assessments are low, to say whether or not it's a teacher problem or a student problem?
Yeah, so that's, it can be a multitude of things, but we definitely provide observations from principals and the directors of instruction, which is part of our team, will go in and also do that in the classrooms. And they'll look to see if the instruction really is aligned to the pacing, the curriculum. Another way is to also assess that is through, we have some companies that come in and provide one-on-one live coaching. So that if, if, if they go in and they observe a teacher, and if that individual is struggling, they have a conversation with the teacher and typically with the principal to try to correct what's taking place. So those are just two examples of how we try to make sure that that is better aligned.
What, what mechanism for, you know, from a teacher, or from a student standpoint, if, if, you know, in these assessments, if the student is showing like low assessments on, low test scores on these things, how do you, you know, logistically, how do you continue to move forward with the class while addressing the needs of kids that are, you know, potentially falling behind?
So our ultimate goal is to do that in, we call it core instruction tier one. But we know that that piece is still broken, not just in our district, but many places. So we have intervention classes that will put students in groups where they struggle the most. the most. So a particular group of kids may struggle with this particular standard, so part of their day, they are going to be in there working on that standard. Then another set of students who have, may have done well on those standards, struggled in some other areas, put them in a group. And we also have processes for students that are doing well, they might be in a group where they're getting some enrichment. Where if they're a fourth-grade student, maybe they're getting fifth-grade standards based upon how well they did. So there's a process for that.
Can you touch on the term differentiated instruction? Because they're going to hear that during their term.
So you can just add where I leave out, okay? Where I don't put enough stuff in. But, so that's really, so the, the assessment basically helps drive you to differentiate by kid. So what happens even in a lot, a lot of times now, though, is, we, we, we teach, once again, this is a nationwide issue, it's not just Gallup-McKinley, but we teach to the whole group. So we're teaching to kids who need extra support, and we're teaching to the kids in the middle, so we leave out the kids on the high end. So we call it differentiated, differentiated instruction. So we really try to use the data to make sure that we're meeting kids where they're at. So when you go into a classroom, instead of seeing whole-group lecture, you'll see small groups, and they'll be grouped by ability, or they might be grouped by, you have some kids that are doing well and some kids that are struggling for that support, then you'll also see some individual work. So the ideal thing would be to see a lot of learning taking place in small groups or even to some extent in, in individual work, rather than whole-group lecture.
The capability that this allows it, I mean, it's, you know, the, the, to be able to analyze the data is, I, I mean, I think it's interesting to be able to look at it on the, you know, the student level and to be able to, you know, to be able to see that and really, you know, really target, target and focus your teaching. I mean, it's, it's incredible. They didn't, you know, they didn't have this when I was in school, it would have been, you know, it would have been nice. This is an awesome approach, you know, more of a data-driven approach, and it makes a ton of sense.
And so what we feel like is, we, we're, we're, we're pretty good at data analysis, and, and the next step is really looking at that analysis and having it really change the way we do instruction. And one thing that's pretty powerful about our curriculum guides are, if you're teaching a fourth-grade standard, it'll tell you what the third-grade standard is that matches that. So if you have kids that struggle, the teacher can reference that standard to help those, those students that are struggling. And then if you have kids that are really ahead, there's the fifth-grade standard tied to that fourth-grade standard to try to push them. Now, the question is, doing that in a, in a class setting is a challenge. And as a district, we have to do a better job of providing PD to our teachers to do that.
And I also want to add, and that's why the curriculum instruction department was created, we need to provide more support to our school sites through our teachers and to our principals, so that we are more focused on instructional leadership and education in our classrooms, so that we can't just say, do this, and just let it, think it's going to happen. We have to be able, be able to put the money and resources where, where our mouth is so that we can make sure that it's being implemented effectively and efficiently.
Well, it sounds like it requires a tremendous amount of sophistication on a teacher's part. I mean, I mean, you obviously have the resources and setup for that here at the, you know, at the office level, but, you know, on the, out there boots on the ground with the teachers, I mean, it's going to require a tremendous amount of sophistication on their end, and their, you know, I could certainly see growing pains and, you know, and things like that. But I, I think this is, you know, I think this is the future, and it makes a, makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, and, and I want to reiterate what Mike said, we, we know we have to do a better job of providing that training to our teachers. And I also want you to know that within our department, we are realistic, we will do some things well, and we will do some things not so well, and we'll just try to get better the next time we, we do something.
I just want to, I just want to say that, you know, I'm really glad to hear that you do have a support team that's going to be out there supporting our teachers. You know, I was getting a little frustrated constantly hearing in the past, you know, we have no support, we're trying to ask for support, where you're not getting no support. So I'm really hoping that your support team really gets out there and supports our teachers. And if that happens, I'm sure this is going to work greatly.
Well, I appreciate, and the last thing I want to say is, I do want to thank the board for allowing, really, Mr. Hyatt, to create this department, because it was just a need that we knew was there, because we can get more things done when it's centrally located.
Thank you, Gerald. Yeah.
President Long, I have no further report to give this evening, so turn the back, time back over to you.
Okay. Board reports?
Um, last Friday, I went to Rocky View and visited their science and technology lab, which was very wonderful. They have a planetarium, and they gave me a tour of all that. The kids were really excited about it, seemed to do well with their, with the STEM lab there. I think every elementary school should be involved with a STEM science and technology lab. And then I visited with the principal from Indian Hills School last Friday also.
I'm next, huh?
Yes, Chris.
I attended graduation for Gallup High School and had a great time. It was really exciting to see those kids, you know, they're just getting started, and it's exciting to see them and the, you know, the enjoyment they get, the crowd was great, and speeches weren't too long, luckily. And everything, everything seemed like it went really well. It was pleasant to be there and had a great time.
I attended a BAC laureate in Tohatchee that they held for the seniors. I think that was something I really enjoyed, and, and the students seemed to be very, they were really glad to have something like that done. I think it hasn't been done in a while, but I did attend that. I also tended, I also was a judge at, at Twin Lakes for their Prince and Princess and Brave competition. You know, it was really amazing to see how these young elementary kids, they're second and third graders, get out there and actually introduce themselves in Navajo and do a traditional talent as well as a modern talent at such a young age. You know, I really commended these children and their parents, you know, because I know it does take time to actually dress, dress their children in the attire that they were wearing, and these children were dressed beautifully, jewelry, everything. And I, I was very glad and pleased to be there with these children and, and support them in that manner. I also attended the Crown Point graduation on Saturday, as well as the Thiru graduation. Both graduations were very, were very nice. I enjoyed them and just, just enjoyed hearing the speeches from the salutatorian and valedictorians, as well as the guest speakers. And I, I really think that both graduations went real well.
Thank you. For myself, I attended the Crown Point Law Day. You know, we have police officers from the Navajo Nation, the county, and state police. I guess this is all about establishing partnerships with various entities that I can use, can work with, in helping our children achieve competency in their education. Then I also attended, with Kevin, the Brave and Princess Pageant at Twin Lakes. Then Saturday, attended the Crown Point High School graduation. And the other thing, May eighth, I guess it was, I was invited by Congressman Pierce, but I got my days mixed up, so I didn't attend his meetings here. I was scheduled to be, take part in a roundtable discussion on education. I was out at Crown Point, meeting with the Law and Order Committee of the Twenty-Third Navajo Nation Council. So that was also a good meeting, too. But those are what I've been doing. With that, let's go down to number three, notices and communications. May twenty-ninth, Memorial Day, no school. And then guess what? The next day is the last day of school, and, and if it was me, I probably wouldn't go to school on the thirtieth, the next day, so the majority of us.
Mr. President, Mr. President, may I ask you a question? Maybe, maybe Mr. Hyatt knows the answer to this. Why in the world do we do that? Like, where you have to come back for a day after a holiday or something like that?
Well, I'm going to suggest, maybe in the future, who knows, maybe you could be on the calendar committee to see how fun it is to put together a calendar. It's a little bit more complicated than you think. We could probably, even the people that put together the calendar and work on it with the union and administration, you, there's, you always said there's a give and take.
Sure.
And so it's a decision, there's always things like this, that decisions have to be made, and it's always easy to pick it apart armchair quarterbacking from the, up here.
If it's as fun as the budget meetings, maybe I'll go to that, too.
Yeah, it's a little more fun than that. So, yeah, there's, we always have to take into consideration the days off, the holidays, when school starts, and there's a host of other things we've taken into consideration with summer school and summer activities. It, it's not as easy as you think. It doesn't look great when we're looking at one date. We look at the whole calendar, it looks pretty good besides maybe that one instance, so.
Yep, this is what brings happiness to our education in the school district. So things like this, you know, they bring excitement to what we do, and I guess it brings out the youth in us. So Brian said no. But anyway, so last day of school is the thirtieth, then May thirty-first is Professional Development Day, last day for teachers.
It's not, I'll make a correction, sorry, Mr. Long, President Long. Last day for teachers due to the snow days, we've had to push that up. I think we're, is it June, June seventh? June seventh is the last day for teachers. I apologize for the correction.
Okay. And then June the first through the third is New Mexico School Board Association Law Conference in Albuquerque. June the fifth is our next Board of Education meeting. Then we go to graduations. On the eighteenth, Tohatche High School will have their graduation at six in the evening. On the nineteenth, we have Reima High School at six in the evening, Myra Mira High School, six in the evening. And then on the twentieth, Central High School at four, Seikai High School, eleven in the morning, Navo Pine High School, ten in the morning. So those are the graduation dates. No old business to discuss. And then you can read the other consent items. And we go down to new business, I, approval of revised public comment policy. Mike?
There have been several suggestions and comments regarding this, I think it was a couple, couple board meetings ago, where the board did not act. And so there was a suggestion to put this back on for possible action again that was more conducive to what the board wanted. So I am just going to simply turn this over to the board, if there's any motions that want to be made or, or not.
Any comments, board members, on this issue?
Mr. President, I do have a question here. You know, we had, we have here where it states the revisions, recommended revisions, time limit to three minutes. And then the second one is to have the request of this, have the request in the superintendent's office by four P.M. the Friday before a scheduled board meeting. On that one, you know, I don't know where that one's coming from. We hadn't, we have had no discussion on that as a board, so for it to be listed as a recommended revision, I don't, I don't know where that's coming from or who has, who, who discussed that. But I, myself, would like to stick to the five minutes that we're allowing our, our parents and our community members, our students, to get up and voice their concerns to the board. I feel that their voices are very important, and they should be heard. And as we see every time, five minutes, they get up there, and most of the times, they go over that five minutes. Five minutes is not even enough time. So to give somebody three minutes, we're not going to hear all of what they need to say, especially when there's some of the parents that get up there and have more than one concern. I think that we, we, as a board, need to hear those concerns, and I don't think that five minutes is, is, is too long to ask to give to our parents, our students, and our community members for us board members to hear. And as far as having to submit to the superintendent's office, you know, to me, public comment is mostly made for us board members to hear the concerns in the community. I don't see why they would have to submit to the superintendent's office their requests the Friday before a meeting. Most of these parents work, community members work, you know, they have a hard enough time running in here to sign up prior to six o'clock to even, to come and sign up for public comment, much less having them to get off during the week or on a Friday to meet the deadline, a Friday to get in here to submit their request. So for that, you know, I, I'm in, I'm in disagreement to that as well. And I really think that we have, as a board, we have gone through several steps in revising our policy from keeping public comment to what's on the agenda and time limits and everything else. And I really feel that where we're at now is where we started from, from the very beginning. We started out way back, it was five minutes, and sign up was prior to the meetings. Then we started changing it, changing it, changing it, and none of those, none of the changes seemed to work for our community members, our parents, and our constituents. Therefore, we're back at where we started, which to me is probably the best way that we've, we've handled our public comment. So therefore, I'd like to stick with the five minutes and have them sign up prior to the meeting.
Michael? Chris?
I think we should, limited to three minutes, there's been much abuse of public comment. And the request in the superintendent's office, that's in the policy of the, in the policy of the board.
Mr. Shab, may I ask what policy? Our, our Gallup-McKinley County School Board?
I have yet to see that, and I don't think we have ever even, I, as long as I've been on the board, I've never had that to where they have to submit it or prior to that, so I don't know where that's coming from.
Chris?
I, I, I think this three minutes is a, is a reasonable, reasonable compromise, and I don't think it's too much to ask of, of folks wanting to give public comment to be organized and efficient in their comments. I want to make sure and reiterate, I said this when we were in Navajo and we brought this up, the reason I think that a time limit makes sense is so that we can fit more public comment in. I would like to see more people comment, and I think it makes sense for them to be efficient and organized in their comments. There's, we, you know, I, I don't think that's an unreasonable request, and, and I do that, like I said, so that we can have more people comment. I would like to see more people comment.
Mr. President, I think that, you know, what Mr. Martin's saying, you know, even limited to three minutes is not going to make more people get up here and do public comment. You know, that, I hardly think that the time of three minutes or any time is going to increase or decrease people from getting up and speaking when they feel that they have a concern that they feel that the board needs to hear.
I think it's certainly interesting to speculate about that.
Okay. So it seems that we need to make a decision. I think from my point, one of the things that I'd like to see is public comment that is more organized and controlled, meaning that any comment should be con- Meaning that any comment should be constructive criticism and that will bring out what is the, the basic concern of the person that's making the comment, not just, you know, making comments that is not, I guess, conducive to planning or addressing problems. That's pretty much my comment. I think we need to control the public comment. And as far as having the requests in the superintendent's office, that is pretty much to get more control. All the forms that are submitted, I think if we have it in the superintendent's office on Friday before the board meeting, that would probably make it more organized.
Mr. President, I think that, you know, when you, when you talk about having public comment more organized and more under control, we need to realize that public comment is a right to our people and our constituents. It's a right of freedom of speech. They can get up there and talk about whatever they want to talk about. We don't, we can't, we can't limit them or tell them what they can talk about, what they can't talk about. You know, it, it's their right, and I, and I strongly feel that. So, for us to say that we need to take control and, and control what they're gonna say is wrong. I mean, it, it's their choice for what they're gonna get up there and say, that's their freedom of speech.
I appreciate people's public comments, and I, you know, I appreciate their, their right to say whatever they want. I, I just would like to see a more efficient and professionally run meeting. I would like to make a motion to support the three, three-minute time limit. But I would, I, I don't mind people turning in their, their requests the night of the board meeting. I think that, you know, I think that that allows maybe for more spontaneity as long as people can abide by the three-minute time limit.
Okay, motions been made, roll call?
Mr. Schaff?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Can we clarify, please, what that motion was that carried exactly? That it's to limit to three minutes but to allow people to submit their requests the night of the school board meeting? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we've taken care of that. Let's go to Item J under New Business.
President Long, turn the time over to Giovanna Hanks for Item J.
President Long, members of the board, Superintendent Hyatt. With us tonight is our district's independent auditor. This is JJ Griego from Griego Professional Services, and he'll be going over the audit.
Good evening, President Long, members of the board, Superintendent Hyatt, members of the public. Thank you for having me. As you, as you know, we performed the audit for the Galt McKinley County School Board this past year. It was our first year. We want to express our, our appreciation for the opportunity to do so as well as the professionalism that the, the district showed in us performing the audit. That we had some obstacles this past year, and at the same time, it, it went, it wasn't about as smooth. Uh-oh, see, I break something every time I get up here. There, oh, there we go. Now, you're gonna have to lower it later, so, all right, there we go. Thank you. You know, the, the district is one of the larger districts in the state. And, and geographically, it is, I believe it is the largest district in the state. And the only, the only one that kind of compares is Gatston, who is quite, quite large geographically as well. If you turn, if, I know you've all been provided copies of the financial statements. You were to turn to page 182. It's kind of, it gives you, gives a summary of, of the financial statements and the, the ability and where the district stands. If you turn to page 182, the, the financial statements are the responsibility of the district. Okay, and, and there's a more and more of a push for the district to prepare their own financial statements. Now, I, as an auditor, as the independent auditor, and a subcontractor to the state auditor, we own three, three reports in here. We own the report of the state, the auditor's opinion. And in this case, we have provided an unmodified report. An unmodified report is the best report I can give as, as an auditor. There's an unmodified report, there's a modified report, there's a disclaimer of opinion and an adverse opinion. And those are the differing levels in order, condescending order. So, we, the district did receive an unmodified report, which is to say that the best report that I, that I can provide. The next report is on internal controls. And this is where we look at the internal controls of the financials, financial operations of the district as well as the, the compliance of the district for state statutes and other, other compliance issues with regard to the programs as well. There is no opinion on that report. That's, I call that our legal, our legal letter, okay? We're, we're not gonna give an opinion on anything, we're just gonna tell you what's, what we found wrong. Now, unfortunately, we, we, of course, in that report, we, we point out the things that we found that were deficiencies. And we'll go over the, over the findings, and we call those findings, but we'll go over the deficiencies here, here momentarily. But again, until, when I get up here, I can let you know that there is, in every school district throughout the state, no matter how big, how small, there's gonna be findings, okay? And, and so, the key is to utilize those findings to improve your operations and improve going forward. The district is, especially this size, there's gonna be errors, there's gonna be mistakes. And really, the, the things that we are concerned with is more of the things that are material, may have, may or do have a material effect on the financial operations of the, of the district. The third, the third report that we have is on federal awards. The district this year, in, as of June 30, 2016, did spend, expend in excess of $54 million in federal expenditures. And the majority of those come in the form of Title I, Idea B, Impact Aid, and School Lunch Program. Okay, this year, we tested Idea B, Impact Aid, and Johnson O'Malley, okay? Now, Johnson O'Malley is a smaller program, but there had been some issues with, with, with that program. And so, it got pulled into our test work, okay? Now, as board members, the thing I think that you, you need to be aware of is you should not see the same, same programs being tested every year. So, if I were to come up here next year and I tested these same three programs, I would be a concern, I would be concerned if I was a board member. And some auditors do do that, and, and, and you need, you just need to be aware of it. Now, in your district, a lot, that, that, the program that will typically come up more than others is Impact Aid, just because it is so large, okay? And this year, if you look on page A2, it indicates that you are not a low-risk auditee. I don't want the board members to think that that's a bad thing. The low-risk auditee, all that means, all that tells me as a, as an auditor, I make that assessment. And basically, it's whether you have findings with regard to your federal programs or not in the past two years. So, you can look back two years, and if there was no findings and it was clean, then you can have a, a low-risk auditee. And all that means is that I'm gonna test less, less of your federal dollars, okay? So, as, as it stands, you're not a low-risk auditee, which means I am required to test more of your federal dollars. But it doesn't, it's not really a reflection upon the district, okay? Any questions so far?
Questions?
I see some of you falling asleep, and I, I know, I know this is just like the budget meetings or the, or the calendar meetings. But, exactly, exactly, it's riveting stuff, I'm telling you.
Mr. Griego, do you work on a, is it a fixed fee or a time and material basis?
All, all state contracts with regards to audits are fixed fee. The only time that something would, would increase the fee is a significant change in the scope. So, if, for example, if I were to come in and, and say next year, I came in and all of a sudden, you guys got an influx of federal dollars from two or three other major programs, and all of a sudden, I'm testing six instead of three, and my original proposal was based on three, then, then that might result in a change in fees. But typically, they do not change, no.
Is there, I mean, I, I understand that these, you know, a lot of, a lot of the, the cost that's involved has to do with, you know, the amount of test work that's involved and, and things like that. But is there anything that we can do as a school district to reduce the price of our audits?
You know, actually, the, what's happened recently is you've seen the audit requirements increase and increase. And we indicate, I indicated earlier that, you know, the, our legal letter that's, that's included in here. And much of the, of the requirements for the audit, those increased fees have really been generated by the, the account, the auditing community or the accounting community. Because what we've done is we've put more and more requirements on, on the governmental organizations and so on and so forth. And basically, so what we're doing is, for example, this, two years ago, it was passed that you now have to come up with a calculation for your liability for your pension plan, okay? Well, what happens is the state has to pay for, for them to do the assessment, and then we have to review it, and we have to apply it to the district. So, that's more work. So, we keep on, it seems like we keep on putting all these additional requirements on you. The state auditor this past year has reduced it to some degree. The, so what's, what he's seen is this trend going up, and I think what he's been, I think it's a good move because it's leveling off as many of the reports and as many of the findings that we're gonna have. In years past, there was no materiality on the findings. So, basically, and you'll see in here, there's a couple in here this year, actually, that really probably will not be findings in the future. For example, if I'm looking at payroll and I test 60 payroll transactions, and I find one I9 that, I9 that's not signed or something like that, for 2016, I had to report that. So, in the coming year, that's not gonna be a reportable transaction, okay? So, that's just, just one example of a minor thing that we've used to have to look at. And now, we can kind of, we have to document it, but we don't have to put it in the report.
In my experience, it seemed like the competency, the higher the competency of the accounting staff, the less the, the price normally is when you're talking about audits. And, and so, I would assume we are as cheap as it's gonna get at this point.
Well, you, you guys are, you guys are, with the size of the organization, it, it's gonna be probably about standard to where you're gonna be. The other thing that has happened in this past year is the, the document that you have before you is 200 pages long, okay? A lot of the reports that are in here now are not gonna be here in 2017. We've gone to follow more of a national trend and there, and, and not including every single fund and every single budget in your financial statements. We will look at them, but they will not be included in the final document.
Based on these, these findings that you have, you know, looking through these findings, I mean, if you were to go back and audit, say, like, right now, again, with these things, would these, would these still be findings or have you done a good job of clearing them up?
Board Member Mortensen, members of the board, there's probably two or three. For example, there is one on I9s, there is one on the mileage reimbursement rates. Those are items that, they are state compliance items, but may, may, may go away under the new rules. And again, I, I can't promise that that's the case, but that may occur because I'll be looking at them for the 2017 fiscal year. So, there, there is a good possibility that those will go down. Again, you know, with an organization the size of Galt McKinley County Schools, there's gonna be findings. It's just about limiting them. Now, part of the thing that, that I do as an auditor is, and I did this with this report, for example, the Johnson, there's a Johnson O'Malley finding in here that in reality, I could probably break into three or four different findings. And I try and consolidate the findings so that we, we can address everything in one finding, whereas other auditors will break it out into three or four. And so, that, that's what I try to do to limit the number of findings, not limit the number of findings, but address the issues one at a time because there's no sense in addressing the same issue over and over again.
Makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
If you see Lonnie or Frank, make sure and tell him I said hi.
I will. I don't get back home very often, but, oh, Lonnie, over at the other firm, yeah, very good, I will. Now, I was, I, 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 I know that there, we're pressed for time. I wasn't planning on going through every finding, there's 13 findings. And I, I, if you'd like me to, I'd go, I'll go do a brief overview. But if, if, if you've had the luxury of, the luxury, I say, of going through each one of them individually, I will tell you that there are items in here. A compliance or other matter is a strike one. I kind of call it a strike one. A significant deficiency is a strike two, something that you need to kind of start paying more attention to. And of course, the material weakness is, is a full count, right? You, you're swinging no matter, you're, you're gonna be swinging at the next pitch. And so, the material weaknesses are the ones that you need to focus on and really address. With that, with that said, the, the, the significant, majority of these are significant deficiencies. The, the material weaknesses really occurred more towards the back where, where we have the compliance with the Johnson O'Malley. And as well as, there was an item that was significant deficiency that was a continued item from previous years with regard to special education. And that's just had to do with the preschool, but I believe that hasn't been addressed. And we, we did have four additional findings this year that, that we didn't have last year, but we also had some last year that went away. And so, we are, we, there are findings within here that also go to the charter school. I think they had one finding as well.
Where is this audit report available for anybody to read?
Basically, it's on the state auditor website, or I believe you posted on your website as well.
Super, super, all right, great. Well, people wanna, you know, people have a right to see this stuff. They can see the, how, you know, how the school district is taking care of the funds. And I mean, we view these as sacred funds and want to make sure as, you know, we're caretakers of them that, that, that they're being used in an appropriate manner, and so, it's important that people can see this.
Well, and I, board members, I, I want, I want to, 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 to stress this as well. What we typically hear is, oh, we have 13, 13 findings. And we try and put kind of a value on the number of findings that the, that the district has or, or so on and so forth. You know, a district this size is typically, is typically gonna have anywhere between eight and 15 findings, okay? You're not, you're really not gonna walk away, if you, if you get down into the five findings or the, or fi, items like that, it's really efficient and, and, and to be honest with you, it, you might have someone that's not probably digging as deep as they probably need to. But I know that this next year, in the previous years, eight to 15 findings, with the new rules, with this new state audit rules and everything else, if I was a, a board member here, I would expect anywhere between four and eight, somewhere in there.
How many of these findings, and, and just off the top of your head, you know, how, how, how much of a dollar amount, but how many of these findings have question costs associated with them? And if, I mean, ballpark figure, quantify how much you're talking about as question cost?
The only, the only item that has any, and, and it's not, the question costs are not identifiable. It has to do with the Johnson O'Malley program. And you're looking at probably about $40,000 to $60,000.
Okay, okay, a lot of these findings, I mean, from what I was seeing, a lot of them have to do with, they're more like compliance, compliance issues and, and some things like that. Not necessarily like, hey, you know, Not necessarily like, hey, you know, there's crazy amount of money walking around the door.
There are no items in here that indicate missing funds, only, as you indicated, maybe unallowable costs.
Okay. That's important to note, I think, for everybody to understand that a lot of these findings don't necessarily have question costs associated with them. They're compliance issues and, and not necessarily like, you know.
And remember, an audit is not, is not geared to find fraud.
Right.
But, you know, and I think a lot of people think that it is, and that's the perception out there. And, but fraud is typically found by other, by other individuals within the district or in the government, as well as community members. And, you know, like I always tell people, you know, it's interesting that, that, you know, something happens with a hundred thousand dollars worth of Title I money and nobody really says anything, but if someone steals, you know, two hundred dollars out of the, at the chess club or something, there you go, it makes the front page news. So, so, you know, it, it's really, with the district and the board members and the administration, you have a real, you have a real responsibility because, because people are very sensitive to those issues.
What was your materiality level on an audit this size?
On the audit, well, again, this last year, materiality levels in the state of New Mexico are on a fund-by-fund basis. So we have materialities, for example, on your general fund or your operational fund could be, you know, we could be looking at anything over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Whereas other funds may be as low as forty-five to a hundred dollars.
So that's important for people to understand, as, you know, important for people to understand based on the materiality of it. I mean, they may or may not even look at transactions that are individual transactions under a hundred thousand dollars and, you know.
Yeah, we, you know, especially in the larger funds, there's, you know, basically, that's why we set materiality.
Makes sense. Otherwise, you guys would be here all year long.
Yes, we would. Mr. President, board members, Superintendent Hyatt, are there any other additional questions? Otherwise, I think it's overall, it's a good audit. We, we were late on it this year because we had some, some issues come up, but we, as I told Giovanna, the other day, I'm looking forward to getting this thing done in October this year. Right, Giovanna? I'm putting, I'm putting pressure on her, just like you guys do.
Thank you, sir, for the report. And I think, board members, this is just to acknowledge that we received the audit report.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a quick comment that I, you know, I think that the findings and, and things like that, I mean, as I indicated earlier, I mean, it points to a high level of competency, accuracy, and honesty in, in our, in our bookkeeping and business, business functions in the school district. And I really appreciate the efforts of Giovanna Hanks. And, and I think, you know, I think it's worth noting that she's doing a good job, her and her staff, and I certainly appreciate it.
Board members, I would second that, she, she worries about every little penny.
Oh, yeah.
Don't be trying to poach her.
No, I wouldn't do that.
Thank you. So, need a motion to acknowledge?
Motion to acknowledge, is that the only action that is available to us at this point? Good, motion to acknowledge.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Okay, let's go down to item K.
President Long, I'm gonna invite Dr. White up for the next two items, K and L.
Okay.
President Long, members of the board, Mr. Hyatt, I'd like to ask Vern Bia to present the bilingual application part, and I'll do the title III part.
President Long, members of the board, members of the community, thank you for having me here. We would like to request that you approve the bilingual application that we have submitted to the state. Again, we are putting that for every school in the district, except for Gallup Central, which we don't have teachers for, to address bilingual. And the example that you have here is for Crompoint Elementary, but we did that for all the other schools. That would include all eighteen elementaries. It used to be nineteen, but obviously, we have Del Norte now where the two schools merged into one, so we have eighteen elementaries, seven middle schools, and then eight high schools that we have included for that. So there's thirty-three schools in all, and I thought it'd be kinda a big report to include all thirty-three. But all, all the reports are very similar, and I'm open to questions regarding this.
Questions, board members? No questions? Okay, item K, now, question, Kevin?
I was trying to get the time, the timeframe for these, where it states the amount of time per, per day, per class, or whatever, per student.
That are, that are having this, we're operating off of certain models. The heritage model is what most of the schools will be doing, and that is a one-hour, I guess you'd say, model. There are two schools what we're doing, what we call dual language. That would be Navajo Elementary, much like Mr. Werrito said earlier today, and also Crompoint Elementary. And the dual language is a three-hour model where you do heritage language, you do the ELA language, and then you have the dual language program on top of that. So it's a three-hour block, and on that third hour is where we're gonna determine how we're using Navajo to teach whatever course they have. It could be science, social studies, or fine arts, depending in the Navajo language. So that's what they will be doing in that program model.
What school, did you say was gonna be doing dual language again, Navajo and?
Navajo Elementary and Crompoint Elementary. That's what we filed under this application.
Questions, comments?
One question, is it just, we're offering Navajo as the language? Or is it, we offer bilingual, or Spanish?
Thank you for asking that, I, you know, I just burned my memory. We are also looking at Zuni. We're going to REMA, and we're gonna offer a Zuni language course there as well. So we are, we are in touch with the Zuni council to, you know, to work with us in that manner, so.
I think, I think he was asking, you know, with this dual lang, dual language agreement here, it, it does also cover Hispanic and other.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, item K, New Mexico State Bilingual, we do a motion on? Question, motion made by Michael to approve the bilingual multicultural education plan, program plan? Roll call.
Michael Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Now, let's go to title III, English Language Acquisition.
Thank you, President Long, members of the board, Mr. Hyatt, members of the public. What you have before you is a request to approve our Title III English Language Acquisition Plan for next school year. And basically, the goal of this, of this grant is to address English language proficiency. For about three thousand thirty-two students, that's roughly twenty-seven percent of our total student body. And primarily, the Title III is targeting training for all teachers on English language development, meaning ELD, that's the reading, the speaking, the writing, and the listening skills. So when, you know, in the olden days, once upon a time when we were in school, our teachers told us, read chapter five, answer the questions at the end of the chapter, and take a quiz, and if you got it, great, if not, you just kept going on. But now, with ELL, English Language Learners, we have approximately three thousand of our students who have, who speak or hear a language other than English, whether it be at school or at home. And as a result, sometimes that hinders academic progress. And, but like I said, with the dual language, if they know more of their language, they become proficient in both. So for Title III, we're looking at doing a lot of training through, looking at our data from last year. Writing is one of our lowest scores. So we're looking, as you all know, that writing, if you, if you become a good writer, that means you know how to read and research and put your words on paper. So we're looking at a lot of training on step up to writing. We're also doing sheltered instruction training for all of our teachers, meaning that there's gonna be specific, they're gonna be trained on specific methods on how to help students with the speaking, the listening, the reading and the writing piece of it. Also, we do have ELL students that are low in math proficiency. So we're gonna target elementary and middle schools on a ELL math program. Since we don't know, since we don't have our part scores yet, we don't know which score, which school has the lowest math scores. So based on those, we're gonna have interventions for that particular school to pilot two math programs. And finally, we're looking at a district parent advisory council more, would be representative of the ELL population. Not only do we have Navajo, we have Zuni, we have Pueblos, we have Spanish, we have Filipino speakers within our district. So we'll be more inclusive of, of the parents from that population. And also, we're gonna be training parents on Common Core, reading and math, as well as looking at literacy nights to help our parents understand how they can support their children in school. So basically, Title III is, those are the main focus areas of this grant.
Questions, comments, board members?
No questions, no, sir.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve.
Okay, motion made by Michael, roll call.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Thank you, Hyatt.
Oh, Hyatt, Vern, thank you. Let's go down to item M.
President Long, members of the board, this is an action item that's a long time coming. We have been without legal service contracts for several months now. And so we are finally in a position where we are ready to present a scope of work to you. We have got input from the board, we have got input from outside entities such as the Mexico School Board Association through past president Manuelito. And so we are ready to present to you that scope of work. I apologize to you that it was not in your packet. We have been working on this for quite a while. Again, this is nothing, there's nothing in here that is earth-shattering. It's just a combination of the things that we collected from the board as a response or as a scope of work. So I'll turn the time over to Giovanna Hanks, give you a little more detail about the process, and hope for approval.
And I did go ahead and open it to page twelve, which has two key pieces that were added to our scope of work versus our previous RFP that was released. One piece is related to specifically targeting the need for additional support in the special educate, area of special education.
Mrs. Hanks, this is eight and nine, on the bottom, on the middle of page twelve, italicized.
And the next is requesting that our future legal counsel keeps us advised of any changes to statutes or regulations that relate to education so that our board is up to date on anything that might impact the school district. Also, the scoring provisions within this were modified. So if you turn to page sixteen and seventeen, each one of those where the number is kind of a lightly shaded color is a number that was revised. And so some of the items that were reinforced on here or modified is a look at past performance, on how that individual firm has worked with current or previous clients. And then also, looking at reducing some of the other areas in order to support that increase in past performance, and being able to specifically look at their ability to work with an educational agency that has the, not only the vast student population that we have, but also the diversity.
Questions, comments?
Mr. President, I have a question. A few questions. Ms. Hanks, is there any provision in here for like a, like a local preference or anything like that, like for, like any law firms that might be within the borders of our school district?
So there is a New Mexico state preference. There are some items that are kind of in the back of that, that are within the standard bid or RFP template, that are allowed within state statute that give certain additional points.
Okay, but nothing for like a, like a city preference, or a county preference, or anything like really local like that?
No, and, and we always want to ensure that any of our bids or RFPs, we do get maximum participation.
When you, with, with this type of a thing, I mean, do you, we advertise, I assume, in different, you know, various forms of media, but also, a lot of times, there's packets sent out specifically to, you know, law firms that were interested in having a bid from. I, I mean, is there, is there gonna be a lot of participation that way? Or, I mean, how much participation do you anticipate in this kind of a process?
I hope that we receive a significant amount of participation. Again, we want to, you know, have the best representation possible. We will, of course, send out information to law firms stating that we are going out to RFP. We'll put this on our website, we'll advertise it in the newspaper. We'll also likely put it onto any other professional websites that we currently contract with to advertise our RFPs.
Do you typically see responses mainly just from firms within the state? Or is there, you know, other, like, national-type firms that might respond to this type of a thing?
So what we've seen in the past is, we'll occasionally get ones that have multiple offices. With offices residing within the state of New Mexico, they may be a multi-state firm, but we'll see a response from an office within the state.
Is there anything in here that, you know, is very, very specific to our school district? Or is it mainly kind of a boilerplate type of a scope of work? I mean, is this something that you pulled a template from somewhere? Or were you like, oh, man, we, you know, really gotta be critical about this?
Sure, in monitoring the multitude of RFPs that go out for legal services, ninety-nine point nine percent in the state of New Mexico have many that are on your list, such as the general litigation, labor relations, those types of issues, personnel-related law, those types of things. Again, the two that were added after reviewing many different RFPs from across the state that we really felt needed to be added was the specific piece related to special education for our district, and then also a legal firm that would be able to provide updates to the Board of Education regarding any changes to state statute or regulation. And it's just because there are so many of those small items that may pass through our state that maybe are not immediately brought to the forefront for our board, that we felt that that would be important. We would never want to artificially narrow an RFP to ensure that a specific firm was awarded.
Sure. How much, I mean, legally speaking, or whatever, how involved can we as a school board be involved in the selection process, or, or even just from a spectator standpoint?
So by our board policy, all bids and RFPs are approved by the school board. You will always receive the information from that evaluation, the tabulation sheet regarding the evaluation. And then I'm not sure if Mr. Hyatt wanted to speak to this. One of the things that we were actually looking for is an external evaluator on this specific RFP, given some of the issues that have occurred in the past.
That would be the evaluator, or just on the team of evaluators?
We are looking for an outside entity outside of McKinley-Kony to give, what we're gonna call, make sure there's no bias in the decision of the scoring of this particular RFP due to the history over this last year. So, as far, but as far as, if you're asking specifically whether the school board member should be involved in the scoring of an RFP, no, only approval. Because then you're scoring and approving, and that wouldn't be appropriate.
Are we able to be involved, just from a spectator standpoint, you know, who turns in RFPs? And, you know, being able to, you know, watch the progress like that? Or is it? Or is it, are we going to be in suspense until it's presented to the board when this is, you know, after it's scored?
I prefer suspense.
Okay.
I assume we can participate in the opening of the bids.
Right, there will be an official date of the actual receiving of the documents. Now, the items that are actually included in those bids, anyone who's been on an evaluation committee, if you have in the past, you do sign a confidentiality agreement. The reason for that, of course, is because we want our vendors to be quite candid when they submit proposals to us. So, we would never want any of their professional or trade secrets leaked. So anyone who is on an evaluation committee, of course, will sign a confidentiality agreement, will not discuss the items that were presented. Now, as far as the firms that actually meet the deadline, sure.
I think having an outside, you know, an outside entity score this thing makes a lot of sense. I mean, it really, it really removes any perceived bias and, you know.
And that's why, and when I say suspense, I'm not saying that jokingly, I'm actually saying that seriously in that I think due to the nature of our situation with a legal services contract or RFP in the past, I think it's best that we all stay out of the way and let the process go through without any board or district possibilities of messing this up, let's put it that way.
Sure, it makes sense. I do think we should have cake and fireworks when we open the bid, so.
I just heard that Mr. Mortensen will be bringing cake and fireworks.
He still hasn't kept his promise on bringing breakfast burritos, remember that?
Yeah, I know. Well, Kevin's the one that wanted to move that meeting to two, that's too late for burritos.
So...
So with the school board's authority, what we can do in order to get this process started, in order to get firms interested and get those bids coming or proposals actually coming into us, we do need your approval to go ahead and submit this RFP out for solicitation so that we can receive offers in. And then, we can also bring to you, once we finalize the evaluation process, we are still working on how and which outside entity will be facilitating that process.
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
Okay, Chris, motions made, roll call. Thank you, Javana.
Thank you.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Thank you, board members. Let's go down to item O, approval of the GMCS Facilities Master Plan.
President Long, I'm going to turn the time over to our director of construction and currently taking care of maintenance, Ron Triplehorn. And he, again, just a reminder, he was here before helping with the presentation of this master plan. And so I'll let him take it from here, this is just the approval piece of this plan, so.
Good evening, board members, Mr. Hyatt, members of the community, thank you for being here. So we have finally got to the end of the facilities master plan process. With the action item that I submitted, I also submitted the detailed capital outlay worksheet, I guess you will. It was basically a list of all the capital outlay projects that are in the facilities master plan. Those are no, by no means in any specific order of importance. So, and this document, like we spoke before, and I'm sorry, Sayar Gearhart is here with me, and Michelle Pfeiffer, her assistant that helped us with it, she wasn't at the last meeting. So, this is a living document, we can add things to it as things come up. This is something that is required by the state. It was actually due, I think, April 30th was the original deadline, but we had some scheduling conflicts. So, I think the easiest thing to do is open it up to questions. This document, when it's, you know, in the final form, is two three-ring binders full of paperwork, paper basically, so probably about 600 to 1,000 pages long, very detailed. So, I would just like to open it up for questions, because I'm sure there's a bunch of them.
Questions, comments, board members?
President Long, I have questions. When these, when these things are done, are they normally going to be done line item by line item? Or is it going to be like, you know, like this Chi Dodge Elementary School? You know, it's got a big chunk of, chunk of money here. I mean, you're going to do these things a piece at a time? Or is it like the whole project and it's bid out to a general contractor? Or how would this work?
Well, some of them, some of them will be bid out to contractors and that's mainly going to be with the significant, significantly large capital projects, so the ones that are funded by the state of New Mexico through the Public School Capital Outlay Council and PSFA. Those are kind of, let me regress, and those are kind of non-negotiable because the state only funds them when they're in a certain spot, when they're available for funding. So those, you know, like replacement of Rocky View Elementary, that's a kind of a non-negotiable, that's a, because that's a state-funded project. Now, projects that we fund ourselves from general obligation bond monies and/or two mill and SB 9 monies, we can do those in any order that we'd like, and we may just pick little chunks. Javana actually last week received an email, or maybe it was earlier this week, Impact Aid has actually set aside some specific monies for construction that deals with health and safety issues in buildings. So we're going to be exploring that, and that may be where we do a lot of these, you know, maybe some HVAC upgrades, because that's a health issue, health and safety issue, we don't want kids overheating or freezing in the classrooms. So, we're going to start working on that, that aspect. But with, how much money? $269 million? $262 million in capital outlay deficiencies. We will never have enough money to do all that work. Never. So, we have to really prioritize. This is something that, you know, that I'll work with, with Mr. Hyatt and Mr. Bond and the rest of the district staff, as well as the board, as to really coming out with some priority projects that we want to hit early on in this facilities master plan cycle. So this cycle is good for five years, this plan, but of course, we can always add stuff that comes up, like when Gallup High broke a few years ago, we added that into the facilities master plan, so.
Board of Education, Mr. President Long, I could also add here, we are planning to have a strategic planning session here in the near future. And some of these types of topics with respect to capital projects will also come up in that discussion, where you'll have a chance to provide even more input if we want to mold, mold things with respect to our plan, so. Just want to make sure you understand that you are, you will have some more input here in the near future.
It's incredible amount of work that needs to be done.
There's, yeah, a lifetime's worth of work.
Right.
To do.
I just was curious how some of this stuff worked, some of these, you know, the amounts, how you get these things, and if you're going to just piece them out, or it's a big project all at once, get taken care of, and, you know, if the school district has qualified people to do a lot of this, or if it's mainly going to be subcontracted out, or?
So some of it will be performed, the work can be performed by maintenance and operations team. Some of it, a good majority of it will have to be contracted out, like upgrading playground systems.
Right.
We can't install playground systems just because of the liability, it's better to have a certified installer do it, you know, stuff like that. We can't, M&amp;O can't replace a heating and cooling system. That's just way beyond the scope of their, their work and their abilities as well, so. So it's going to be a hodgepodge, but mainly it's going to be contractor work.
This is mainly just...
Which then, of course, drives the cost up even more. If we could self-perform more of this work?
Sure.
You know? We'd be great.
This is mainly just, I mean, it looks like kind of a, I mean, a report, I mean, it is what it is, there's nothing really to argue about, right?
Right. But like Mr. Hyatt said, we will have a strategic planning session where we sit down for the next, you know, next year, these are the, these are the topics, these are the items that, you know, that I feel that M&amp;O can perform, and maybe we put a priority to that, these are the items that we're going to have to contract out, and then we prioritize some of those items and take little small chunks out of this. We're never going to get caught up, because the last time we had a facilities master plan cycle done, I think we had less than $100 million in deferred maintenance, and now we're at 262, a lot more, so. It just keeps growing. That's part of the, part of the capital outlay lawsuit that the district is currently in with, so.
Any other questions?
One question, for schools like Roosevelt, which is, we're planning on closing at some point, is it worth it to invest this money and close it in a year?
Well, the closing of Roosevelt is contingent on a couple things. That was the construction of Jefferson and the construction of Lincoln. So Lincoln, we will hopefully be breaking ground in June on Lincoln, but we have a 20-month construction window on that. So there's really no way at this point to close Roosevelt early without bringing in a significant amount of portables to Lincoln. Jefferson, we could probably move those kids from, that are going to go to Jefferson from Roosevelt, we could move those kids now, because that school's ready for those kids. But to deal with the kids, you know, we're basically splitting that school in half, there's a handful of kids that are going to go to Red Rock, about 20, I think. We could absorb those kids into Red Rock, but we still don't have anything, anywhere to put those kids for Lincoln, so.
Mr. President, a motion to approve this master plan?
Okay, motion's been made, roll call.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Just keep in mind, say it good.
Say it good internet.
Yeah, we are there.
And that's the, that's the billion-dollar question there.
Outpost.
I have, I have something in the works on that, and I'll talk to you about that later, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We do have some legal issues, updates that we need to deal with, board members. This time, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I so move.
Okay. Motion been made to go into executive session.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
801.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Keep coming, appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Let's go, let's go. Yeah, I need a motion to come out of executive session.
I make a motion that we come out of executive session.
Roll call.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito? Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
903.
Okay. We're back in a regular session, and we had an executive session to receive updates on litigations, and no action is required at this time. It was just an update on some of the litigations that are pending and all that, so, that's it. I guess that...
Motion to adjourn?
Aggression, motion's been made to adjourn.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen? Ms. Manuelito? Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes, yes.
904. Writing better, huh?
Yeah. Nah, ain't good thing there. Boy, don't push him down. Saying, yeah, you're saying about this. They never stop.